Welcome to Will Not Be Here Tonight. Ms. Shennepin?
I am here.
Mr. Curry?
I'm here.
Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Steigel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Rouse, Will Not Be Here Tonight.
See, we have a Boy Scout back there. We got one or two Boy— we got— oh, I can only see one. How many Boy Scouts we got back there?
It's like two hands up.
Come forward, gentlemen.
You can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I hope they know it.
Well, no, wait, wait, wait.
It's okay.
Aren't you going to grow them first, or are you going to grow them afterwards?
Afterwards.
You guys want to come up and get closer to the podium?
Come up.
Come on.
You're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Then you're going to get interrogation from the judge. Ready? Go ahead, guys.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, don't go anywhere, gentlemen. You're first because you're closest to the podium. Tell us your name, which troop you're with, and then Mr. Lewis is going to ask you some questions.
My name is Wyatt, and I'm from Troop Four.
Well, you have to tell me where Troop Four is from.
Oh, it's Upper St. Clair, where I live in Peters.
Okay. That's why I didn't know it. And the young man next to you is?
Uh, my name is Ewan, I'm also from Troop Four.
Do you live in Peters, or you— okay, well, I'm going to get you in trouble with your mothers tonight, okay? Is that okay? Last week I was out in British Columbia in Alberta. Do either of you know where those places are? Northern Canada, the Canadian Rockies. So tonight, you got to go home, find an atlas, and look it up. But what I'm going to tell you about is, I was traveling on a train. And the train traveled up these rivers, through passes, through the Canadian Rockies, from one side of the continental divide to the other. Okay? Now, the names of the rivers were Fraser, Thompson, and another one is called the Mackenzie. And here's the part that's interesting. Those rivers were all named for the people that found them, okay? They were like discoverers back in early 1800s. The shocking part of it was, how old do you think they were when they found these passages by the rivers? Well, we have to guess, that's your question.
I guess twenty— I might guess like sixteen.
You're very close. They were fourteen.
Wow.
Which is kind of remarkable, thinking in terms of—I remember how long old you said you were to Mr. Lauer. We don't have to repeat it, but it was like, Mom, next time I'm asking for a little bit of freedom to get out of the house. Think about these three kids, out in the Canadian Rockies, discovering a passage to the Pacific Ocean. So thanks for coming in. All right?
Sir, I'm pleased.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have to stay for the rest of the meeting to get credit.
Okay, first item on the agenda, approval of the transcript of the public hearing held on April 24th.
So moved.
Motion to second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, approval of the minutes of the council meeting held on June 12, 2023.
So moved.
Motion to second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
I have to abstain.
Four zero one, Mr. Lauer. Special reports. Do we have anything, Mr. Lauer?
Yes, Saturday was Community Day in Rolling Hills Park, and I just wanted to share with council and the community some—the images of that day. It was the first time the Community Day's been held in the new park. There were 190 different vendors or exhibits there.
How did that compare with pre-apartment years?
This is slightly bigger than what it's been.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That was our reaction.
Yeah. You know, one of the great things that we did when the park was being developed, that roadway, there's electrical service to all those vendors along that way. When you went there and looked, you could see a lot of people took advantage of that. That's always was a challenge in Peterswood Park. You know, yet you saw the same kind of things that we're accustomed to with Community Day occurring all day long there. And I think, you know, the Community Day committees should be commended for their effort. One of the things they're going to be doing is, not this week, but next week, is getting together and looking at what has happened there and how maybe we could even improve beyond that, what occurred on Saturday. One of the things that on Saturday also was occurring as part of Community Day is the dedication of the piqued pavilions at the top of the hill to—in the name of Jim Ross, the first manager of Peters Township, and Michael Silvestri, the second manager of Peters Township. That went really well. It was very well received by—the Ross family had—it was like a family reunion. They had people come from all across the country to that commemoration. So it was sort of like a family reunion for the Ross family. I could tell you, Michael was very touched that in fact, council took the decision to dedicate a pavilion in his name. And I guess, you know, as always, Community Day ends with fireworks. I think it's kind of interesting. You know, I was out today, and I ran into somebody who lives on Longview Drive, and her comment to me was, boy, the fireworks would break because that new cul-de-sac here building—we sat in that cul-de-sac, and Longview Drive's ways away from here. She said, we—next year, we plan to have a fireworks party inside of that cul-de-sac. I think because of the elevation where these are being shot off, I think there's going to be a lot of people who get to see them who don't show up necessarily at the park. I think things went really well. The parking worked well, doing it with conjunction with the school district. The shuttle buses were busy, but they were never to a point where people were waiting a long time to get over to the—to the park side. So I think it was very much a success. And I got to give a lot of credit to the Park and Rec Department and Michelle Harmel. This is what Michelle does best, is organize these kind of things. But that effort is an effort of not only the Parks and Rec Department, but the Public Works Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department. It's everyone here kind of working together that makes that happen, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lauer. Audience comments. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak? You can speak for up to five minutes on a non-agenda item.
They were great. Fireworks. We could see, like, up in Stonehenge, we're just like we were.
Yeah, we got—I got comments from a lot of people who said that they saw them from their house. In fact, funny thing is, my wife loaded the girls up to go over to watch them, and then I called her and said, you know, you can just see them standing on our front yard. So next year, you know, I think there could be a lot of fireworks parties in Stonehenge and that surrounding area next year.
I think you're right.
Because the elevation is a lot better than it was at Peterswood.
Yeah.
John McCarthy, 105 Greenbrier Drive. If someone's on vacation, our Police Department does an excellent job checking on someone's home if they're requested to do so. I noticed the police check a home every day. The officer got out, had a look around, and a walk around. Our excellent library does a good—has a very good notification system. If one signs up for their email list, not only are you informed of the status of your materials, the materials you have out, they inform you of computers being down, computers being back up, weather closures and events. The money used upon the library is very well spent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the audience wish to speak? Seeing none, we will move into unfinished business, of which there is none. So we'll move right into new business. First item, homeowner request regarding stormwater facility located at 302 Sugarwood Drive.
Yes. So the purpose of this agenda item is to get a sense from council on how to proceed with a request from Mr. Kelly regarding the maintenance of a stormwater management facility located in his rear yard. The image that's in front of you here shows Mr. and Mrs. Kelly's house. If you look in the backyard, you'll see that there is topographic lines that indicate that there's a depression, a pond there. And then you also see a line with a pipe coming out of that. In September of 2000, Peters Township Council approved the Sienna Woods Plan Phase Two R4 Plan of Lots. The approved plan contained adhesment to accommodate the stormwater management facility in the form of a detention pond. In this regard, the approved plan also contains two notes, and—let me see if I can—there's So the one note says that the owners of lots 216R1 and 218R1 are responsible for the maintenance of that portion of the stormwater detention pond on their respective properties. The note below it says that Peters Township is responsible for the maintenance of the inlet and outlet structure. So you've got this situation where the township is responsible for that structure that is circled there. Right now, that structure is silted in. There's actually an orifice at a lower location, and we need to go in there regardless of what council decides for the remainder and service that, because right now it is not functioning as its design. The problem that's associated with it is that you—in this—through the middle of this pond, you have erosion that's occurring. And this is where Mr. and Mrs. Kelly are asking the township's assistance. If this were to come in today, it would never be the recommendation of Mr. Zabidus or myself that we have a private homeowner maintaining a stormwater pond. It is generally beyond what you can reasonably expect that a individual property owner to do. So what needs to be done here is that we need to—I don't even know whether you remove that stone or supplement that stone, but we need to put large-sized limestone into this to create a channel such that you don't have this erosion occurring as it approaches the outlet. And there's a—just like we do on other ponds that are maintained by homeowners' associations, what we're suggesting, and I think Mr. and Mrs. Kelly understand, is that the maintenance of the landscaping that surrounds the pond, that would remain theirs. What we would assume responsibility is for the maintenance of the channel, as well as the stormwater structure that we're already responsible for.
Well, where does the water ultimately go, then? When it exits the Kelly's property? Does it get into a pipe, or?
No, there's a natural water course that runs down toward the nature.
Well, is it going to go down over that land? Because as I'm looking at this map, that land, not directly below the Kelly's, but to the right of them, isn't that where that development we're discussing is going in?
Correct. I think it's three kind of parallels that western property, that development.
So is there any way to—when—whenever that land is developed, is there any way to tie it into the stormwater plan on that plan?
Doubtful, because I don't think the creek actually crutches onto that property. They just parallel it.
Okay.
But you know, the odd thing about this is, you're asking individual—you know, the township has asked individual property owners to maintain a stormwater management facility for water that is coming off of their neighbor's property up above, upstream. And you're doing it for the benefit of people who are downstream, and suddenly, Mr. and Mrs. Kelly are responsible for doing that. And if they fail to do it, it doesn't fall back on them. That failure falls back on the township. We have a responsibility for maintaining—ultimately for maintaining the stormwater management system.
Well, if there's any question, it's Mr. and Mrs. Kelly have the nicest pond in Peters Township.
That's what they do.
So I guess the question exactly, what are you asking of us? You want to come—I need you to come forward so we can pick it up on the microphone.
Well, you know, as Mr. Lauer described, eighteen years ago, I moved in there, and I've been trying to take care of it, because I was told that was my responsibility. But as erosion has occurred, silt, and it keeps getting deeper and worse, like, I just am—I'm out of gas, and I can't do it anymore. I've spent a lot of money, I've spent a lot of time, I've been in there with the pick and shovel many times, hauling rock, but I'm asking that you take it over. In the short term, I'm hoping you can repair it with some bigger rock, as he suggested, but I don't really know what else I can do anymore, so.
How big—in that picture there, is that a pond there? The whole thing?
Is it a pond?
Is that—where is the pond?
He doesn't think of it as a pond.
I understand.
We think of it as a pond, yes, that's a pond.
Well, I understand, but what's showed on this plan here, there's that whole area, the pond, okay?
Yeah, it is. I guess if that's what it's described.
It never fills up, though, right?
Well, when it rains very hard, it'll have for a half an hour, they don't have a kind of puddle.
Then it dries up, goes down.
So Mark, what would be the best way to resolve this? Take the grass out and put all rock in there?
Well, yeah, I think—I don't know if it's important to know this, but some of the history that Mr. Kelly shared with me is, I guess the bottom of the pond was all grass originally when you moved in eighteen years ago.
Right.
And there was enough turf, established turf there, to take the natural water flow, like, when it rained. But there was a waterline break on the road up above about ten years ago, and it ran for like two weeks, and that chronic, constant flow of water weakened the soil and created a channel down through there. So Mr. Kelly actually went in and had a landscaper at his expense, you know, put in river rock. And it looks really nice, but as you can imagine, that round stone doesn't lock together and doesn't hold. So whenever it rains now, it just tumbles downstream, and then it erodes underneath. And that picture that Paul showed you of the outlet structure, there's probably two feet of sediment built up around that outlet. It's tough to see here, but—so that's the net effect, is that the sediment gets washed through, clogs up the outlet structure. So I looked at it with Public Works, and the way that those guys would attack it would be to haul in like bigger angular limestone riprap, kind of shape up this channel, hog out the silt from around the outlet structure, basically build a new low-flow channel out of real riprap rather than the riverstone. We think that would—that would hold. I mean, it wouldn't look as nice, but I think you've already conceded that that's not a big issue for you at this point. You know, and as Paul said, you know, the Kelly's would still be responsible to mow it and maintain it and make it look like they're lawn, but we would just be responsible for the in-and-outflow pipes and then the channel itself.
And all we're asking council tonight is whether that approach makes sense to you, because if it does, we need to draft an agreement under which this work is going to be done, because to be able to get there, we're going to have to go across the Kelly's property, and we want to have an understanding about what.
I don't have any problems with plans.
Yeah, I don't have any problems. I would check, though, because if you could tie that into the other plan somehow, to alleviate anything, then we should do that, but I mean, I don't have a problem. I think it's a good thing.
Okay. So we're going to draft an agreement. We'll sit down with you and talk about what that means, and then we'll come back to council and have that approved. And this is probably a project we're going to do later in the year, then. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kelly, Mrs. Kelly. Okay, next item, acceptance of the annual comprehensive financial report.
So in cooperation with Josek Speckmutsel &amp; Wood, the township's auditing firm, the business department has completed the 2022 annual comprehensive financial report, and I copy that report's in your pocket. I would point out to you, as we have in the past, one of the things in terms of transparency is that this audit meets standards established by the Government Finance Officers Association. It is published in conjunction with a popular annual financial report that is geared more to people without a financial—an accounting background. And then, of course, the township always participates in the budget award program as well. And in the state of Pennsylvania, actually, the state of Pennsylvania, there's probably less than a handful of people—of communities that actually do that. So council needs simply to take an action to accept the—
I move to accept the annual comprehensive financial report.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, approval for recording purposes of the Brown consolidation is shown on drawings prepared by the J.R. Gelson Associates, Inc., dated April 10, 2023, for Kevin and Catherine Brown.
This is a real simple subdivision. They own two lots that are adjacent to each other. All you're doing is removing the one property line between themself.
I'll move that we approve for recording purposes of the Brown consolidation is shown on drawings prepared by J.R. Gelson Associates, Inc., dated April 10, 2023, Kevin and Catherine Brown.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, resolution, accepting the roads and storm sewers in the Westbury Plan of Lots Phase One.
Environment and Sound Enterprises are requesting the township to accept the public improvements in the form of the roads and the storm sewers in the Westbury Plan of Lots Phase One. Gateway Engineer has inspected the installation of those public improvements, and along with Mr. Zabidus are recommending the acceptance by the township. What this does not include is two stormwater detention ponds. Those will be accepted by the township later, as the development is completed. And in addition to that, the final wearing course will not be installed on the roads, which is our normal course of action on new plans. Performance security is held by the township to ensure that that work is completed at a later date. It's my recommendation that Peters Township Council approve Resolution 060223, accepting public improvements in Phase One.
I move to approve the resolution 060223, accepting the public improvements in Phase One, the Westbury Plan of Lots, excluding the stormwater detention ponds and other matters that were put on the record by Mr. Lauer.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, authorize the appropriate township officials to execute an easement agreement with West Penn Power for the purpose of providing electrical service to the cell tower at Peterswood Park.
The cell tower at Peterswood Park has been constructed. The electronics equipment needed to power that are in place. The tower itself is in place. What needs to be done is it needs to be energized. To be able to do that, West Penn Power requires adhesment across our property to allow them access to that location. It's my recommendation that council authorize appropriate township officials to execute an easement agreement with West Penn Power for the purpose of providing electrical service to the AT&amp;T Tower located in Peterswood Park.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion?
Do we know if this new tower will be just Cat 5, or?
Yeah.
Four.
I'm assuming that this is going to be 5G, but I don't know that as a fact. Yeah.
It is. Yeah, I mean, you're not going to build anything else these days now.
You want to say something?
Well, did we have a vote on this?
We had a first and a second.
Okay. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Mr. Lauer?
The only thing I wanted to point out is, right across from the high school, AT&amp;T has put in a small cell. And if you drive by that, what you'll see is it's ready to go. It simply needs to be energized as well, so there's a meter socket that—where there's a meter needs to be placed. So they're slowly but surely filling in along East McMarten Road, as they had told us they were going to do.
Who's that on?
AT&amp;T.
AT&amp;T. And this is what?
That's AT&amp;T.
Okay.
Hey, Paul, did you ever figure out what that one was in front of the VFW?
I do not, still don't know what that is. I have no idea.
It might be Verizon. I don't know, we won't open it. It doesn't look like that. It's a big hole. At least it's better in that area.
I'll tell you what, I'll make a point to have lunch at the VFW, and I'll find out, so.
Next, I'd request to hold a pickleball fundraiser at the tennis center on July 29, 2023, to benefit Meals on Wheels.
So Meals on Wheels at the Crossroads are requesting permission to host a fundraising event at the Peters Township Tennis Center on July 29, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I talked to Mr. Schuster, who manages the tennis center. There's nothing scheduled for that day. There will be facilities available for tennis players, because this will be on the hard courts as opposed to the clay courts. The one thing that they're asking for, and I don't have a problem with it, and it's been recommended by the Park and Rec Board, is relief from the township's policy that requires anyone using those tennis courts for fundraising to actually pay the court cost.
I noticed that it wasn't unanimous, though, the Park and Rec Board.
It was not unanimous.
Because there were some people that did not want to set that precedent.
Right.
And, you know, secondly, this is bigger than Peters Township, it's more—it is. I'm not going to be in favor of waiving it, I can tell you that right now.
Yeah, we've had that request in the past for other people that have used that facility, right? If I remember correctly, and we've never waived the fee in the past?
I have no recollection of the township ever waiving the fees.
That's what I thought. Does anyone want to make a motion?
How much does it be?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Maybe somebody will pay for them.
I mean, I agree. The issue becomes if you waive it for one person, then what's your experience with the waiver?
Then it's not why it's waived for me.
Then at some point, then there's, you know, you have to waive the fee for everybody.
I'm representing Meals on Wheels. We feel that this is like, you know, real needed in the—excuse me, in the community. And we feel that, you know, anybody who needs this and is for something that's not something frivolous, but we are really struggling to make ends meet. And so we figure that every dollar that we make, we can save, we make. I think you all know the problem with feeding people today. We charge $6 a meal, that doesn't—even cover the food. And we get tons of food for free because of people like Heisler's, Trax, Simmons Farm, Trader Joe's. But we still—we just thought we got to be a—I would—something wouldn't, as far as the council's concerned.
Ma'am, do you know what the fee is?
Pardon me?
Do you know what the fee they were going to charge you was? Or is it?
It's like, I think, $48, I don't—but we came here just on principle that, you know, it was $48.
Oh, that's more than that.
Per court, or what is it?
Yeah. And if council wants, I can get that and bring this back to you, but it's a per-court fee based upon—
You have no idea what it is?
I'm going to tell you the second.
Exactly, $16 per court?
But it's an hourly fee, it's not a—
How long is the event?
All day long. And it's multiple courts.
We are pointed this side, and I'll be in court there.
Well, Paul, if you want to put this on the agenda for two weeks from now, you know, the fee part.
What's the date that this is supposed to be? July 29.
If you could—
Or you want—I mean, if you want to do the calculation now, that's fine.
Yeah, if you give me a second.
Yeah, because they need to tell people.
Right.
See, they weren't in the depression, it wasn't even that much.
Yeah, that's what we wanted to do.
We have difficulty fundraising, because it's—oh, I mean, just because of the structure of the organization.
It's $8 per court, per hour.
And how many courts are there?
Three.
Three.
So you're $24 an hour.
Times how many hours. We have a day rate or anything?
No, that's all the same.
How many hours are going to be?
Twelve hours. So what's that come out to?
So every four hours is $100.
Four hundred and eighty.
Forty-eight, 268?
Four hundred and eighty.
How much is that?
Mr. Cozer, you don't need to waive the fee. I'm sure that I can get someone to figure to cover that cost. That won't be a problem. That won't be a problem. You won't have a charge. I can get someone to cover that cost. Okay?
I'll donate it. Thank you.
All right. Someone want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the whatever this is.
Without waiving the fee.
Prove the fundraising event for Meals on Wheels at the crossroads, but not waive the court fees.
Yeah. And we'll get someone to do that for that.
If you get stuck, I'll bet. Don't give somebody a problem.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion to second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Payroll and bills. I spoke with Dr. Barosko this morning. He advised me that he reviewed the payroll and bills, and then everything was in order. So based on his representations, I'll move that we approve the same as submitted. Second. Motion to second, any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Five-zero, Mr. Lauer. Correspondence. Anything, Mr. Lauer? Okay, anybody want to discuss any of the various board committee reports or minutes? No?
I'd like to have an update, though, maybe next month or so, about the ambulance service. Because I heard there were some issues.
Township road tour tomorrow night, six fifteen.
Township tour, six fifteen. Gonna meet in front of the library. That's where our first stop is, the library building itself.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
Anything, anybody want to see on the?
Can I ask, um, you know, given the, the time of the day, I'm assuming everybody's gonna have had dinner before they get there, or do we need to do something?
No, let's just, we'll, we don't need to stop and eat anywhere. Let's just. More time we can spend covering the things we need to look at.
The sooner we get done.
Anything, anybody want to see on the next agenda? Okay, anybody have anything for the good of the order? We do have an executive session tonight.
We do have an executive session, and I'm gonna suggest that we do it in the room here, because it's gonna be a little bit longer.
Okay, all right, meeting adjourned.